Okay. I call the meeting to order. Your call, please. Commissioner Cunningham.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Commissioner Minier.
Here.
Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt.
Here.
Okay. Welcome to the Brisbane Planning Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, December 13th, 2012. And this will probably be our -- this is our last meeting of the year. So I would like to wish everyone here at WESO, as well as at home, on behalf of Planning Commission, happy holidays. And we will see how things go next year when we will have the big agenda for the Baylands. With that, let's start the adoption of the agenda. Any changes? Anything?
Nothing.
No change?
Nothing. Make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay. If you have a motion.
Second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oral communications. At this time, anyone in the audience who wants to speak before the Planning Commission on the matters that are not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. I see no hands. We'll go to the written communications. I got a whole bunch of these reading materials here and also the gift from Arthur Coat. Thank you, Arthur Coat. I hope something that we all can use and enjoy. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
With this, we start with the new business. And the very first item on the agenda on the new business is public hearing on 515 Tunnel Avenue Use Permit UP-10-12. It has to do with the temporary Christmas tree storage for recycling, BRDA Recology Properties Incorporated. Applicant is sanitary field company owner. And the assessed parcel number is 005-152-330. Staff report, please. That's all.
Given the nature of this application, as repeating over the last several years, and I'll keep the introduction fairly brief, but Recology requests this temporary use permit to store Christmas trees for recycling within a 90-foot by 100-foot area at 515 Tunnel Avenue. This would be within an existing fenced and paved storage yard. Discarded trees would be collected in San Francisco from December 20th through January 31st, temporarily stored on this site and then reloaded for chipping at Recology's Integrated Materials Recovery Facility just over the border in San Francisco. The chipped materials will then be used for any energy production at an off-site biomass facility rather than being landfilled. The temporary storage area is needed because of the surge of trees collected. This amounts to approximately 25 truckloads a day at the peak during the first week of January. This exceeds the rate that they can be processed at the materials facility. Temporary use permits have been approved by the Planning Commission for this same use for the past four years. There is no change to the proposal from previous years and no concerns have been raised by staff or by members of the community. In closing, this meets the required findings as detailed in the agenda report, and staff recommends approval of the use permit, the adoption of the resolution containing the findings and conditions of approval.
Okay. Any questions for this staff?
I just have one question. This is the fifth year we've had the application. I sort of remember that we understood last year why it needed to come up every year. Can I ask the question again?
Right. This use is allowed as a temporary use permit which cannot exceed 45 days, and so it fits into that classification.
Oh, okay.
Whereas an interim use permit, which could be up to five years.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
What kind of application fee does the applicant pay for requesting this every year?
He might remember better than I. I think it's on the order of $650.
It's $935.
I'm sorry.
$935?
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay. We open up the public hearing. We have the applicant here, I hope. He want to say a few words.
Thank you for your time. This is every Christmas.
It's Christmas present for you.
I fly here, that's right. It's the Christmas guy.
Right, right.
About 500 tons a day, end up on the sidewalks in San Francisco, and we pick them up and bring them back and grind them as fast as we can. And I think when you drive by, you'll smell Christmas trees for a few weeks. It's kind of nice.
Smells good.
I have a question.
Nice little...
Yeah. What do you do with it again? What do you do with the...
They just get crowned up and burned in biom... It's called biomass. It's the lowest form of recovery there is, really. The energy value of the trees. But Christmas trees are... Pines are pretty good at being resistant to composting, and they're kind of toxic, actually, you know, for other plants.
Right.
Things don't grow underneath pine trees too well. So I guess it's... We do get energy out of them, and actually, probably the greater benefit is anything that's organic that goes to landfill eventually turns into methane. And methane is a really extra potent greenhouse gas. So not only do you avoid the methane part of the decaying organic matter, you do get to harvest the energy from it. So it's much better.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
No question else.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience would like to say a few things about this or any concerns? I don't see any hands, so...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. We got a motion.
I second the motion.
Second the motion. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll start with the discussion of this. Any really concerns about this particular permit?
I have none.
No? No.
None?
No.
Okay. I had the privilege to sit on this for last so many years, so I know exactly what's involved. And again, I think the question that was raised by my fellow planning commissioner is, you know, every year you have to come back here, and is there any way we can avoid that? But the thing, the process is built in. It's one of those things that I guess we have to follow the process. So we'll keep seeing you every year.
I'll get the permit.
Yeah. And you will be a familiar, you know, face here, so... And I don't know how long I will be a planning commissioner, but as long as I'm here, I'll keep approving this particular one for my point. So let's take a vote now. So who wants to make the motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. We got a motion and...
I'll second the motion.
We got a second motion. So if we have the... All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So motion carries. Congratulations. And we have the appeal period here. Anyone who wants to appeal the process, this particular item that we approved, you can appeal to the city council not later than 15 calendar days, 10 calendar days for subdivision application after the commission's action. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the Community Development Department, 415-5082120. So if we don't hear any appeals, you are home free. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, how much has we got charged for the appeal process?
Testing me on the cost tonight, I want to say that one's about $1,300.
$1,300?
I believe so. Do you recall, John? From that order.
So that precludes anybody to make any appeal? How are people going to bring $1,300 just to appeal a particular...
I think the amount is set to... There's a certain cost of staff and time involved with an appeal.
I think there's something wrong here. $1,300, my God.
Well, actually...
I don't think I'll ever appeal when I have to pay $1,300.
Because it goes to the city council, you're then involving the city attorney's time as well as the council's time. So it is expensive to the city to process these appeals.
But is there any relief for the person who are trying to appeal?
You can always request to the city council that they waive the fee, but that's a council decision then.
Yeah. The reason I was asking is because I got the notice from the city of Oakland for removal of the trees, and then the fine line says if I want to appeal, I have to pay $500. And I said, well, just to appeal, I have to pay $500? Then might as well forget about it. So anyhow, enough of that. We'll go to the next item, which is the items initiated by this staff. And it is to do with...
Actually, another public hearing item?
There's another public hearing.
On Beashore. No, extension, no. I'm ahead of my time.
I will have to...
You are ahead of your time.
I will have to recuse myself from this hearing, as I live within 500 feet of this property, so...
So you are... So you have to...
I'll go outside and read a book or something.
Don't go outside. It's too cold. You can just stay in the back there. Okay. Sorry about that. I tried to rush through the most interesting item on the agenda tonight, so sorry about that. We go to item number two, public hearing on 3708 Beashore Boulevard. Use Permit UP-9-12. Extension of Use Permit UP-611 for a contractor's storage yard in the SCR-1 Southwest Beashore Commercial District. Sean Brennan, MK Pipelines applicant, is Joseph Gilman. Gil Martin is owner. And assessed parcel number is 007-350-100 and 110. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. The applicant requests renewal of the existing use permit for a contractor's storage yard at 3708 Beashore Boulevard. The use was originally approved by the Planning Commission in 2006 and extended on approximately an annual basis since that time, with the latest approval being for two years. The applicant for this renewal is Sean Brennan of MK Pipelines, and he has indicated that they would become the new owner of the site for the same use, but need greater certainty in the ongoing use of the site to proceed with the purchase of it. He has therefore asked for the renewal of the permit, but with no sunset condition on it. Aside from this requested removal of the sunset condition, the use is essentially the same as previously approved. MK Pipelines is an underground utilities contractor that performs local public works projects. They currently employ 20 people and have 20 pieces of construction equipment, 10 pickup trucks or utility trucks. Their equipment would generally move from job site to job site and rarely come back to the yard. Also, field crews are not dispatched from the yard but go straight to their job sites. On average, field crews would return to the yard twice a week, with the exception of their heavy haul driver who would average up to two trips a day. Also, materials would not be stockpiled at the site but are delivered generally directly to job sites. Approximately once a month, special order materials may be fabricated at the site prior to going to the job sites, though. Also, some overage from job sites are stored at the back of the site behind the building. The yard is currently screened by a slatted chain-link fence above which no materials are to be stored per the existing conditions of approval. That is, with the exception of the materials allowed behind the building, which may be stored up to 15 feet in height. The hours of operation would be from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. In order to approve the use permit, the Planning Commission must determine that the proposal is consistent with the general plan and that the use will not be detrimental to persons residing or working in the neighborhood, and that it will not be injurious or detrimental to the property or improvements in the neighborhood or the general welfare of the city. The application meets these findings for approval. The use is consistent with the general land use designation and is consistent with the general plan policy of maintaining and diversifying the city's tax base. Also, given the conditions of approval, the site will be maintained in a manner consistent with the general plan. Also, the use would not be detrimental to the neighborhood or general welfare of the city. It should be noted that during the Planning Commission's and subsequent city council discussions on the general plan update, this area was identified for future consideration of eliminating outdoor sales and storage uses. However, as the Planning Commission is aware, due to other factors such as the proposed development plans for the Baylands, the update to the general plan has not been completed, and so the use remains consistent with both the adopted general plan and the zoning code for this district. Ultimately, should the policy language carry through in the future adoption of the updated general plan and after that further consideration of the use itself that's called for in the draft policy, and if the zoning is ultimately then revised to eliminate such uses, the zoning ordinance regulating non-conforming uses would apply to this site. In such a case, this use would continue to be... Could continue to be maintained but could not be expanded upon. It should also be noted that the adjoining properties are currently vacant. The subject property would be 40 to 60 feet from the closest building of the 30-unit condominium complex that's approved on the property to the south. A landscaped yard would separate the two. A similar project has been preliminarily proposed to the north, but that application remains incomplete. And although there is potential development of the sites to the north and south to multifamily residential, staff views the proposed use as not having a significant impact on these properties due to low traffic volume and low levels of daily site activities. Finally, a new condition has been requested by the city engineer with this application to require an approximately 60-foot-long concrete median in Beashore Boulevard. This would be to prevent turning movements across the southbound traffic lanes. In closing, staff recommends conditional approval of the use permit extension per the agenda report via adoption of the resolutions containing the findings and conditions of approval.
Thank you. Any questions for...
I have some questions. What was the sunset clause?
It essentially was a condition that was imposed on the previous use permits. Initially, it was for one-year terms, and then the latest was for a two-year term. And it had to do, I think, concerns over housekeeping is my recollection of this.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking. Okay. The second question I have is not about this application, but there's a 30-unit condominium complex approved on the property to the south. Is that part of the Form Base Codes or was that before the Form Base Codes came in?
It's actually before the Form Base Codes and then it's... And not included in that area. Essentially, the Form Base Codes would be further to the south in the same district but on the other side of the...
And Form Base Codes have not actually been implemented at this point?
No. We have not gone through the process for that, and when we do, we'll not touch this property. It will be to the south.
Okay. I think those are my two questions.
Okay. Any other questions?
I had a question about the... You said the 60-foot meeting was going to be put in. Currently, has it been used to cross southbound traffic?
That's my understanding from the city engineer, that there's a concern with illegal turning movements, and it's a double yellow stripe.
That's right.
And so that's not supposed to happen.
Do we know... And I was just curious, do we know when the last survey was done on traffic? Because it seems like during the morning, you know, kind of on the ends of the window, it's... It was heavier traffic than... I mean, during the day, it is lighter, of course, but do we know when the last traffic survey has been done? I was just curious.
I... Yeah.
And one other question, I think when we discussed when applicant came in last time, and I realize the status of the storage, you know, related to the general plan, but originally, was an applicant planning on building, right, an office building or a site or an office building of some sort or there, and then we made... It's because of financial, you know, difficulties and economy and so forth, we then decided to support the storage or the current use of... No? Was it...
My recollection was that he had...
Before.
Yeah. Tim may remember better than I, but that he had discussed before the Planning Commission the last time or two potentially putting this to housing.
To housing. Right. Okay.
And there might have been a mixed-use component of that. I don't recall that.
No. Okay. I was just wondering, because originally, there was housing, but then I think there was difficulties in getting the development, right? I mean, moving.
Right. With the economy such as it is, I think...
Right. And so then we kind of...
And this would not preclude that if, I think, if the housing market was to come back enough to actually make it affordable to put housing there, make a pencil out that would remain as a use that could be allowed there. And so, you know, there's not really an investment into this property because it's already existing as a storage yard, so...
Right. Okay. But that was the original intent, was the house... The housing... Was it this?
My recollection was that the current owners purchased the property for storage, which had been the previous use.
Ah, okay.
But then they became aware of the city's intentions for that whole area to change in character, and they had discussed the possibility of doing condominium development on the site, but they never formally submitted any proposals. But they were aware of that.
Commissioner Doe?
Thank you.
I actually wanted to talk to the applicant.
Pardon?
I actually had questions with applicant.
Okay. No problem. As I recall, Tim, we had a long discussion about this whole zoning of that particular area, and some of the concerns were that we are mixing the industrial as well as, you know, the residential. And the main concern was that we allowing, say, the senior housing or hospital or emergency center, stuff like that. So from that perspective, I still remember that we had quite concern about allowing that indefinite approval of this kind of a project. That's why we wanted to keep the limit, you know, that they should come back as the situations change. My biggest concern was, again, that pipeline, the gas facility over there, this was sold to a different owner now, the propane gas. So those type of things, I think we still have to be very, very careful when we're trying to plan this particular area as certain things we have in mind, and especially the mixing, these type of things with condominium next to it. So I really have a concern about giving a blanket, you know, approval for a long period. I still like the idea that we should come back every two years, no longer than two years. As the conditions change, we should look at it. And so that's what I'm thinking, that as the economy gets better, the condominium site is built, some other type of facilities will come there, but we should try to concentrate on that particular area, the facilities that not going to cause any great public safety concerns. And for these type of things, when there's going to be a storage and a lot of truck traffics and all that, and also it's going to generate the noise, especially somebody decided to put a senior housing right next to it, which is allowed in that particular zone, then we should be careful in terms of allowing that for indefinite period. So those are my thoughts on that. And with that, we will open up the public hearing, and we will ask the applicant to come aboard and discuss their projects and what their plans are.
Hello. I'm Sean Brennan. This is Maliki Carrigan. We're the proposed owners of the property. We just want to be treated in the same way as everybody else, though we'd like the open-ended permit. We're of the same belief as yourselves. If the area gets rezoned and somebody actually does build next to us, it's in our financial interest to let it be rezoned, and we would probably sell it on and move it on for development. It's very... It would not be practical for us to remobilize our business down there for a two-year permit. We're looking to be there long-term to be a good neighbor and a good resident. We're not a renter. We're an owner. We're going to occupy the place as an owner. We're not planning on renting any of it out. We plan to run our business from the facility for as long as the zoning allows. And if at some stage in the future Brisbane rezones that area, we'll be on board with that. It's a financial advantage to us, but if it's fair for you guys, just give us a two-year permit, because they were all renters. We are not renters. And we can't take that risk. We have planning... Sorry, excuse me. We have finance in place. We are ready. The loan is ready to close. The first week of the new year, we're ready to move in. We have a lot of construction equipment that the city of Brisbane will pay in property tax as well as the land property tax. I think it's a good economic value to the city of Brisbane, and it's definitely a good economic for me and Maliki. So for two years, it's not something we can risk. We need to have it open-ended, just like everybody else has. And if you guys rezon, we're on board with that.
Okay. Thank you. Because we do have another facility nearby that we... On Beashore Boulevard, where we extend every two years. I can recall the address of that, but that was the storage where they store the pallets and construction material, and they come back every two, three years for approvals. So this is not an isolated case?
No. There's no other Beashore Boulevard site that comes to mind that has this...
I thought there was one that they were storing the freeway stuff that was coming out from freeways, and it was... Is the same place? Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm mistaken then. I thought it was a lot different one. Anyhow, anyone else wants to speak before the commission, before we close the public hearing?
Sorry. We apologize for being late.
No problem.
There was a concern raised before we got here about traffic, but we put in our permit... We have been for seven years operating out of a facility in South San Francisco. At a maximum, there is probably four trucks a day leads and enters our site in South San Francisco. We don't work out of the site. The site is kind of like a home base. All of our construction crews go straight to their job sites in the morning. They come back to pick up miscellaneous material that they may not have or lost, but no one gets dispatched from there. They don't come there like a lot of plumbing companies or rotor rudder that's up the street. They don't come there and get dispatched from there. They go straight to their job site. It's basically a place for collecting extra material that might be left over from a job site, and it gets put there and they come and get it. Our crews go straight to work and straight home from work. It's a place for parking all of our construction equipment, but it's not moving from job to job. In the last probably seven years in the facility, we can get your photographs, we probably have maybe five pieces of equipment parked at any one time. Our equipment moves from job to job all the time. So traffic would not be an issue in our application.
Okay.
In our application.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any hands, so want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Motion carries.
This is what I have to say.
Go ahead.
I believe that from the five years, or I don't know how exactly long I've been sitting on here, that the reason it was a one-year or two-year permit was because it was such an untidy... It was kept kind of as an eyesore. I personally have not any problem at all with having an open-ended permit for this. It seems to me a reasonable request.
Okay.
I also support the open-ended... I also support the open-ended state of the property. It was because of it being unkept, and with the conditions that were clearly defined in the application here, I think there wouldn't be a problem. I did have two concerns about the conditions that were not included. Well, one was modified and one was not included from, I think, the previous list of conditions in '06, and I wanted to bring that up for discussion. One was no operation on Sunday was the original, was in the conditions, and I wanted to know if the applicant had to work for the weekend, because I like the idea of not having operations on a Sunday.
Yes.
Again, which was in the original list of conditions, but just wanted to hear from the applicant if that was necessary. And then the second one was regarding maintenance and repair. In '06, it said there wouldn't be any maintenance or repair on-site at all, and I think in the conditions now, it states that it wouldn't be uncovered, but they would have covered maintenance and repair. And I was wondering, there was a concern about waste and, you know, toxins from cleaning, and what they actually needed to clean or repair. So those are my concerns.
That the staff can respond to that?
Yeah, so the maintenance is to be inside the building, and so no outdoor maintenance work would be allowed to be done, so there wouldn't be the contact, potential contact with stormwater.
Never meet all the OSHA requirements and all that, all that particular indoor facility.
Right, there is F2 regarding non-hazardous liquids such as latex paint should be stored indoors unless otherwise approved by Public Works.
Like the disposal of the--
Yeah, in terms of other type of storage, they would have to get approvals for that. Fire Department would be involved in issuance of their business license and take a look at their facility, that's a routine.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Isn't that included in the ongoing post-occupancy E, right? Okay.
Right.
And then the weekend, so is it, it's open, the hours of operation include the weekend, correct?
Right, and the applicant may want to respond if they need Sundays, or if that's an issue that, as you indicated, the previous application, I think it was excluding Sundays.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
You can come and respond to this.
In our work, we do pipelines, and pipelines can break at any time, day or night. In our experience, in 10 years as MK Construction, MK Pipelines, I think we've had to work two Sundays in 10 years. So you can draw whatever conclusion, we don't like to work Sundays either.
Okay.
So I think two Sundays in 10 years, I really hope two in the next 10.
Next 10 years?
I wish.
Thank you.
Well, San Francisco Water Department is doing a lot of improvements along the Beishore, so hopefully we don't have to worry about that for next 10 years or something. Any other questions for the discussion?
Through the chair, John raised, just raised a good point, is that the noise ordinance also applies. There's, within the zoning district, it does address noise specifically for the district, that it's not to impact off-site receptors essentially, so they do have performance standards built in to the zoning district, so.
Good, okay.
Okay. My concern was, again, regarding the mixed development in that area, and I can see the applicant reluctant to have two years or three years' approval. I'm trying to see if there's anywhere we can put in a condition where if the, again, that will not be really fair on the part of the, you know, this particular applicant, that put a condition that if there is a facility built close to it, then they will reconsider the use of this particular facility. I don't think we can put that kind of condition here, but I'm just trying to figure it out, how to address that. Right now, we don't have that concern, because there's not much development going on there. So once the condominium is built, then I don't know whether it will trigger that type of development along Beishore or not, but the, listening to the applicant, he is open to that kind of, you know, when the conditions change, he's open to come up with the ideas to meet, to mix in with the rest of the development in that area. So we can take his word, and let's show that in the end of our record, that the applicant is sure of the willingness in case that does happen.
Excuse me, but my understanding is the Form B codes are going to be further down. If it's Form B codes further down, there can still be mixed use, or will it only be towards building, family homes?
For this northern section of the district, it would remain as a mixed use. Then for the southern portion, that would be Form B codes, it would go to residential only, and that was to comply with the state housing requirements.
Yes, it's a different area, different section.
And that's about, how far down would it be?
Oh, I--
Quarter mile?
Quarter mile, probably. You have the 30-unit condominium complex to the south, which took up several parcels, and then you have several more parcels with the mobile home park, so it's ways down.
It's ways down, yeah. Well, I think it's a mixed use, so we should just leave it as a mixed use, and I don't see why we shouldn't just keep it as mixed use.
The only reason was, at that time, I remember, the discussion came about when we were trying to redo this whole zoning, is the fact that, you know, the mixed use in that area where we have the residents and industrials and hazardous material like that, you know, propane gas facility and all that, we're trying to mix everything, and there was also provision to allow the hospitals or senior care centers and all that. So the questions were raised as to how that's going to impact, as well as, I think, we allow the kindergarten and schools in that area too, so, for the children. So that was a concern discussed at that time, and I still remember.
But if we want, the city at any point could change the zoning, is that correct?
Uh.
So I think, you know, if it's mixed use, we should allow it to be mixed use, and if the need comes up, we can change the zoning, because the city does have that.
No, the zoning is already allowing that, so the zoning is currently allows all kinds of uses, you know, in that particular zone, including the kindergarten school.
But if it's mixed use, I don't think we should be putting restrictions on the--
No, we cannot put the restriction now. I mean, the zoning allows that, and I don't think we can restrict this particular project based on that alone. That was the discussion at the time, and we were trying to do this, and if we, and my desire was that let's not mix all these things together, but right now, that's the way it is. So I just brought my concern, and--
And if I may, through the chair, all zoning, all uses in this district, aside from emergency shelters, are by conditional use permit. So if a new use comes forward for a use permit, and you're seeing that that's not compatible, then, you know, that would be something you could evaluate at that time.
Yeah, that's possible too, but, you know, but the thing is compatibility in terms of what, if the senior center wants to build right next to it, we will refuse that because of the existing industrial facility there. So those questions will be, need to be looked at carefully at some point. But right now, you know--
I think the difficulty is, you know, the way the zoning is kind of written, it's, all those uses are kind of on equal footing with a conditional use permit, which leads, you know, maybe the position, the commission is sort of an enviable position of having to sort of weigh them all. There's no real direction in that district where it's emphasis on residential, or commercial, or manufacturing. It's, they're all kind of by code, are treated equally, so unfortunately, we're all in the position of having to deal with what's in front of us and the circumstances at the time that application comes forward. Again, could the zoning, and might the zoning ultimately be modified in a way that maybe gives everybody a little more direction? That certainly is a possibility in the future.
Yeah, I think so too. Right now, our hands are kind of tied in that respect, and I don't want to penalize the applicant either, I mean, as the zoning we have, and we have to live with that.
And then furthermore, I think we should welcome our business community.
Of course, of course, yeah. I mean, I don't, I'm not--
We have a big area that's for the business, and, you know, there's, in Crocker Park, there's, on either side, there's housing, but, you know, it's our business, and in the business, we should welcome our business.
The difference between the Crocker Park and this is that the Crocker Park, there's the whole area designated as business, and the residential is totally separate. But in this case, you can have a house here, and right next to it, where you will have--
But that's because it's mixed use.
So that's why, that's what my concern is, but again, that's the way these zoning laws are written right now, so there's not much we can do. But again, I kind of got a good feeling from the applicant that they are willing to change if the time comes. So hopefully, this will not preclude any of this senior housing, or emergency hospitals, or kindergarten, that we will have to look at the hazard associated with that particular facility, and next to it will be this other one, but we have given them the, you know, the approval forever. So that was the question I wanted to raise, and, but I don't have anything against any business. I welcome the business, and I think that they have shown to be a very good business so far, and I think they will continue to do so. And again, don't take me wrong, but I'm anti-business. No, I'm not.
I think so. I just want to make it clear that--
And he wants to speak.
And can I just say that I absolutely agree that we have to consider that, because it is precisely that mixed use, so you have to make that balance. And at the same time, while we welcome the business community, we also need the business community to be socially responsible, and I think that's part of the reason why we have the conditions. But correct me if I'm wrong, if there is a violation of the conditions, this can be revisited, correct?
Right, there is a revocation process if, in fact, the applicant, the owner at that point, was not complying with the use permit.
Right.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes, only, and the part of the business is not complying, but it's not the part that if new business comes in, and their use is totally different than--
Yes, I understand.
We raise this--
But this is not a new use.
No, this is the same use, I understand.
There was a concern raised, I believe by one of you gentlemen, about the hazardous materials, the fuel and oil. In San Mateo County, the use of oil or fuel or any hazardous material is administered by the San Mateo County Hazardous Material Boards. And we have a permit and a certificate in our current location. We've had it for seven years with zero violations.
Great.
And in general, I believe the average is two violations every three years. So we would move that permit to the current address, or from the current address to the new address, and we would hope to bring the old record to the new address. So they would administer, I think more so than the fire marshal, they administer. So just wanted to clarify that it would not be the fire marshal. It actually gets from San Mateo County. They know who we are. We know who they are.
Good, thank you.
That's good. Thanks for clarification, and so we are ready to vote. Once again, I will entertain the motion.
Yes, okay, I will move to conditionally-approved use permit, UP 912, per the agenda, and the adoption of the resolution, UP 912 as amended.
Okay, we have the motion.
I second that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move. Again, I need to read the condition for the appeal, that anyone may appeal the action of Planning Commission to the City Council, not later than 15 calendar days, 10 calendar days for a subdivision application after the commission's action. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the Community Development Department, 415-508-2120. And thank you very much, good luck, and--
Welcome to Brisbane.
Welcome to Brisbane.
Thank you.
Okay, now Ms. Karen Cunningham can come back. You have a traffic problem there?
See, that's what I was talking about.
Close the median.
Right.
Okay, so now we go to the next item that I was jumping ahead of my agenda, because I was so anxious to hear that, which is to do with the discussion of Bayland EIR hearing schedule, and I think it's more than hearing schedule, we're going to discuss here a little bit about the process also from your handout. So who wants to start? You can give the introduction.
Sure, I'll do a quick introduction, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the publication date approaches, there's been conversations both at the council and the Planning Commission as to how the document will be presented to the public, and in a way that facilitates public review and comment on the draft EIR. There's been some ongoing discussion with the consultant team as to what might be the best approach, and that'll be a good time to come back, touch base with the commission as to some of our thoughts, and then just as a matter of information, we'll be coming back to the council next Monday, which, and we'll be relaying, you know, the feedback we get from tonight's meeting to the council on Monday. Again, the idea, this is a project of such citywide concern, that we want to make sure it gets a very full airing, and people understand in advance, we don't want to publish the document and then have a mad scramble, and we're going to schedule a bunch of meetings with, you know, one week notice, because that's not going to go over very well. So the idea of kind of in advance, getting ahead of, you know, what the process will be, so people can plan accordingly. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Lloyd Zola, who is our project director from ESA on this environmental impact report, and I will turn it over to Lloyd.
Thank you. After a whole bunch of years, the document is just about ready to hit the public, and part of the issue was with the complexity of the project, the size of the project, the complexity of all the different issues that will be discussed. You've already been through, as a community, an informational program on what is an EIR. The next step is now what does this particular EIR say? How does somebody, now you've been through the general, how do you review an EIR? How do we help the public and help the commission and ultimately the council review the document for the Baylands? And there were a number of considerations we had in how we bring this document out to the public. One is to get information out on the findings, the methodology, the structure of the document, how to actually go through this specific EIR early in the process of the public review period, early in that 120 days. But at the same time, when we get that information to the public early, there's going to be a concern on, probably on the part of the public, wait a minute, it just opened up, you're now throwing all this information at us, how can we react that quickly? So what we've talked about, and what we're recommending along with staff, is to have an informational series early in the public review process, after the document's been available for a couple of weeks, so we can get about a month's notice ahead of time, and talk about piece by piece of that document, what is in it, what are the findings, how to go through, and take some of the things you've already learned generally about Sequoia and apply it to this specific document. and apply it to this specific document. And then later in the public review period, then have a public session where people can comment and discuss what's in the document. So first, information and questions. How do I review it? What are you finding? And then take public reaction later. So we're not asking the public, take this document, review it right away, and then comment. So, and the, the other part of this is that the council has requested that you, as the planning commission, host this series of meetings, or in whatever format that we do. The way that we've laid this out is to start with the project description and talk about the introduction to the EIR. That will go relatively quickly. You've heard a lot about the Sequo requirements. But the project description gets very complex because we have four scenarios at equal level of detail, two submitted by an applicant, two that came out of a public process, and other projects involved are mediation of the site, water supply. And we'll talk about what is the project, how to review impacts against the structure of that project. We'll also talk about the land use section. And the reason that we want to talk about the land use section of the EIR upfront is because that is where the project and all these components are compared to your general plan. And we'll also talk about alternatives, and what the alternatives are, and how to review those against the impacts of the project. We'll then talk about in the next session, traffic-related issues, traffic, air quality, greenhouse gas noise, that are all based on the traffic numbers that we'll see. Then talk about public services, and finally get to some of the physical issues on the site. The idea is that as we looked at this, we tried thinking about, can we present the entirety of the EIR in one night? That seemed like an awful lot to try and do. And I can see by the reaction, you can just picture getting hit with all of that. On the other hand, if we'd follow a schedule of your, your regular commission meetings twice a month, once a month, we're going to stretch out the presentation of the document over a very long period, and use up half our public review period just telling people what's in the document. So what we're suggesting is, a lot of work for you, a lot of work for the public, would be to take these four sessions and hold them twice a week over a two-week period. So two meetings one week, two meetings the next week. And we would give people about a month's notice ahead of time when those two weeks would be. Then come back a month, maybe two months later towards the middle later portion of the public review period, and then take comments on the contents of the document. So that's the, the reason for that structure. It's a lot different than what you would normally be used to in a, with your hearing schedule. But given the complexity and how much public comment we can expect in this community, it seemed to make the most sense, even though it is a lot more work than what, the whole project's going to be a lot more work than it used on, on normal projects. But it seemed to be the most sensible way of, of bringing this out to the public, getting public comment, and not rushing the public through at the same time.
You already concerns about twice in a week, the schedule?
Actually, I do. And the only, the only reason I say that is from living here for a long time. This is not a small issue. This is probably the biggest, no, this is the biggest project that has ever been in California, is in the history that I can recall, in our small town. This is going to stimulate a lot of comment, a lot of discussion, a lot of argument, a lot of comments, the whole shebang. I don't know that we can actually get through it all in that short period of time. If you say two meetings over two weeks, I don't think that can happen. But that's just a gut reaction to your comment. That's from my, you know, being here in this city for many years and being in meetings where very small issues have become large. And this is a large issue to begin with, with so many components and so many different perspectives from so many different people. I don't think we can do it. I think it's just a gut reaction.
I think the way I see it is a presentation, there will not be any comments from the public. Basically, you will be presenting the findings, right? It's just an informational, you know, sections, not a discussion of the, the items that are in that particular section.
Correct. The first four meetings, that's why we, we did this in five. The first four would be presentation of the project.
With no comment.
The information.
Okay.
Right, we're not expecting comment. And that was one of the, one of the issues as we looked at this. Can we take a document as big as it is, present even a portion of it, and expect people to comment on the same night? That did not seem reasonable. On the other hand, if we gave people time to review the document and did the presentation of information late in the review period, people spend a lot of time before they hear that. So the idea is in those first two, four meetings over a two-week period, it would be primarily, here's the information, this is what's in the document, this is how to review it, this is what you will find. Now then go take a month, take two months, and then we can come back and talk about it. I think knowing what I do at Brisbane at the same time, even though we'd be early in the process in providing primarily information, I would not in this community want to say, we just presented all of this. No, you may not make any comments. So we'll need to be prepared for people's questions at that time. But we'd make very clear in those first meetings, there is ample opportunity, one, to provide written comments over this 120-day review period. There will also be the community meeting to discuss and take comments on the EIR. There will then be, after we do the, the close of the public review period and written comments, we'll respond to those comments. And only then does, I would call the real fun begin, which are the formal public hearings on the project itself. So we're not going to try and rush the public through this, or try and get their comments upfront. And that's the reason for that fifth meeting. That would be a month, maybe two months later.
Are you thinking about evening meetings, as like a Wednesday and a Thursday, for two consecutive weekends from seven to 10:00, or how is it?
We even talked about the length that Lloyd might have an idea of, whether you're thinking of a two-hour meeting or two and a half. I certainly wouldn't want to go much beyond two and a half, just in terms of how much information people absorb. I think the window is normally going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. You know, that would be the window, council meetings on Monday. So whether it be Wednesday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Thursday, and it might just depend on everybody's schedule and the particular dates that are, you know, were, were out, that are being proposed. But I think that window of time, Tuesday, Thursday through Thursday evenings, maybe a little earlier started, we may start at seven o'clock as opposed to 7:30.
What I was thinking is if there's a question, then if it's two to two and a half hour presentation, then we should, if people have a question period, we should give them a certain amount of time.
I think that was total two and a half hours.
I don't know whether we should really allow too many questions during that time because then it will be, I mean, basically clarification, but not the, the whole comments on the whole issue. Because then we'll never be able to finish it. Because this is just a presentation that, the way I look at it...
But that's what I was asking.
...just that information. And what we can do is, if there are too many sections and, you know, too many chapters in one, we might be able to divide that in case, you know, people have a little bit more, need more information on traffic, for example, then we can try, you know, put the noise sections in the second following sections. And maybe we can add one more week to it, or one, one more session to it. But I don't know whether we should, I don't think we should allow too many questions during this presentation.
No, and what I would anticipate for format, because one, I could not manage a two-hour presentation. I bore myself long before the crowd.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
The idea would be a presentation of a half an hour to 45 minutes. And that would give us in a two-hour session that night, time for questions as to what to look for, how to do this, why did you get that finding? But, because, you know, I'm trying to balance providing the information with also people being able to comment. I have enough understanding of the community that I would react, no, we're not talking about that.
I think people would be upset if they were asking questions, don't you?
Yeah, I do. And I think the five sessions, I think is not particularly realistic in, given the scope of the project. And given that...
Well, how many?
This has gone on for so many years, and there's so much involved in this, and there's so many variables. I, I don't, I still don't think we can get through it in that period of time.
I think, again, part of the question is how this is set up. And we're setting it up as the chair has pointed, as sort of an informational, primarily a, you know, I wouldn't say a one-way conversation, but primarily to put information out to the public. If we're going to try to have a conversation about, you know, all these topics sort of simultaneously, you're absolutely right, Karen, it would take a lot of time. But the idea is to try to set a table for the community. You know, there's a basic fundamental baseline of information where we're trying to help maybe people get oriented to the document. So when they do want to review it, they kind of have a better grasp of what they're looking for and what kind of things to look for. So, you know, the idea of how much time it takes, you know, to somewhat, I defer to Lloyd in terms of, from the informational side, you know, how long, he understands the complexity of the topics in front of us, he understands the EIR content, you know, of a 40-minute session on any given topic. I wouldn't say, well, we know this is going to be of more interest or more controversy, so it's going to take the consultant twice as long to present it. I don't know that that's, that's a very difficult and subjective issue too, because what's of interest to this group of citizens?
Right.
And there, you know, we, we beat that to death. And then this other topic where maybe, well, we think we do it shortly, and then someone's interested in that, and we're treating everything differently, that, that I think creates its own difficulty.
Then, then from my perspective, if we're going down that track, and I don't recall in the past that we've gone down a track like this, where we've presented information without the public having the ability to say whatever they wanted to say at that time. I don't recall a time that I've been in that situation per se. But I think if we are going to do that, then we need to make it very, very clear and very well broadcast that these are not really open public meetings, these are presentations.
That would be how their character...
And very, very carefully crafted in that manner. Because people are going to have a lot of questions. And I'm, I'm just kind of making notes as we're speaking. And one of my comments, just from the, the brief conversation we're having is, you know, having a form for people to be, you know, making their comments and asking questions on paper so they've got them, so they don't forget. I, I think the more we empower our fellow citizens in this process, the better off we're all going to be.
I think the key thing will be to emphasize the fact that they will have the session five, which is the meeting to receive public comments.
Well, that could cover ten hours.
That's, that's the one that we may have to schedule more than one session for that. I think the, you cannot have the one...
You already know that.
Yeah, but I'm saying that in the outline here, there's only one session. I don't think that will be appropriate. I think we probably have to schedule three or four. And I think during this first four sessions, we had to keep telling them that they will have the ample opportunity in this section five of these meetings, where we'll, we'll get all the comments. And we have to make sure that we, that they try to send as many comments in writing rather than verbal. So that we have to emphasize too.
Absolutely. The way, and this is one of the, the key pieces of Sequo is that there is a requirement to respond to all written comments during that public review period at the same time when we hold a public meeting. Either the first four sessions or the one where we're taking public comment, Sequo will also require that we respond to every verbal comment. So the more there is verbal discussion, the more complex trying to respond to all of it becomes. Because when you have a, for example, a written comment, somebody sends a letter, we can actually, in the final EIR, show the portion of the letter, this is the comment, here's the response. One of the difficulties of taking, responding to verbal comments is all the interpretations that you get of what did they say, what was the comment. And particularly that if it becomes open discussion as opposed to somebody comes, gives three minutes, says something. But if we have, we really need to be careful not to end up in a debate format, because then it becomes almost impossible to separate.
Right.
And, but recognizing also at the same time, even though Sequo would want to push us towards a totally written set of comments, that doesn't work in this community. People want, there's, there's the part about wanting the, the public discussion. So we're trying to get both. And also recognizing that, in this case, we're talking about the draft EIR long before there is discussion on the project itself. So we'll also need to be very careful. What we're talking about is the content of the EIR as opposed to, I like the project, I hate the project, you should approve it, you shouldn't approve it, you want to do this, I like that alternative more than this one. That is not at all what any of this, either the informational series or even the public comment portion would be. Because what we want to do is get all the information on the table in the document into that final EIR, then start the debate over what do you, as a planning commission, recommend to council?
Yeah, I think it will be very, very useful to make it crystal clear, what are the various steps involved to the community. Because this community sometimes have difficult time, you know, understanding that what the, you see the Sequo process is. In fact, I have difficult time also seeing, understanding Sequo, so I can understand. And what's going to happen is in the very first meeting, people are going to start talking about the project. They're going to start talking about, I don't want the residential and all that. So those type of things have to be controlled from the very beginning. And make sure that we say this is a presentation only.
Well, that's, that's our responsibility.
Right, I know.
To make sure that what goes out is clear, crystal clear, and that...
But the thing is, I think the consultant has to be on board also, because he will be the one presenting it. And, and people be in sync with this whole process. So that's, and I think the number five, the meeting to receive public comments, had to be more than one meeting. It has to be several meetings. And the presentation part, you may be able to get away with one or two at the most.
Do you think, I was looking at this, the presentation of the different sections, that we should assign a special day where they would know when the public comments will be for the, they can present for the presentation of the project description, land use section alternatives?
Well, we can...
Again, with the traffic air quality.
What we can do is like meeting to receive public comments on the DAR, we can divide that into four parts, just like we did here.
Right.
So each part will have the comments for that particular part that was discussed.
Right. And then, but I was thinking, maybe we could put the dates, when we have this set up, then we could set up dates for each of these sections, you know, so that people, when they ask questions, will know when the public comment on this section.
Yeah, of course, of course. You have to come up with...
So what are you thinking, John?
Me, in my experience, Lloyd may have a different opinion, is if, as a citizen, I have a laundry list of issues that I've spent my time writing, and I have comments on 14 chapters on this, I may not be real excited to come back four nights to, to, because again, there's, there's not going to be a, this isn't going to be a Q and A in a sense. People, it's going to be more of a, people are going to provide comments. When we get back to, you know, the end, the public comment period, it is only a matter of, again, if we're having sort of unidirectional at the front end where we're providing information, the back end is unilateral, the other way, where we're accepting information. Lloyd's not going to be responding to people's comments or questions on the spot. to be responding to people's comments or questions on the spot. So the idea of breaking it up by topic, I don't know that that would be, most people, I think, if I were a citizen, I really wouldn't appreciate if I was going to have to come back three times.
But the thing is, if you advertise that and you say that this is, this is the time when we're going to accept the comments on air quality, traffic and GIG and noise, if you make it clear and the person is not interested in to comment on those things, he doesn't have to come. But at the same time, if somebody wants to give the comments on the other items that are not on that particular night, they should be allowed to do that too. But what we're trying to do is make the process a little bit easier for the, for us to go through at the end when we get all these comments. So if we have lump into each of the sections separately, it will be a little easier, in my opinion.
Well, I'd like to back up just one second here. Lloyd said under Sequoia, for us to respond, the best way is for the comments to be put in writing. So when the presentations are being made, if we make it very clear, please put your comments in writing, we've got them in writing and we can salt them out. So rather than just this blurb of people coming with things, if they're coming to the presentations and they've got questions, as much as is possible to put those questions in writing, because that's what Sequoia wants, and everybody from the residents of Brisbane talk about Sequoia all the time, which is a fair comment, that we encourage them and we promote the idea of, if you have questions, even before the presentations, put them in writing. And as these presentations go on, they get put in writing, and then at the end, we handle what wasn't handled.
Yeah, but the thing is, the whole idea is, we don't want to make that as a session where we're going to accept the comments. These four sessions were basically for presentation. And I think you just want to give, yeah, written, they can send it anytime.
That's what I said.
But the thing is, you know, the idea is, you want them to be educated so that they can make comments after listening to you and then review the documents. That will be easier for them. So it's.
Correct. And there's a few things we can do, do to help, as I was listening to you, to talk about this. I think one would be, even in the first advertisements, that would say, this is what we're going to do, to actually have the full schedule and be able to have the agendas of each meeting upfront, so that people would be able to see, instead of here's the agenda for one meeting, and here's the agenda for the next. So they would see agenda for meeting number five at the same time they see the entire series.
Right.
The other thing is, in terms of even, and I do this routinely in scoping meetings, is you have the agenda, and on the back of the agenda is a comment form. So they automatically have that. And we can talk through the whole process that, to have the written comments, because we ultimately have to create a written record, even if comments are verbal. And we're trying to get as many different ways of getting information out, getting comments back. And we'll, I suppose, at some point have to make, you know, the decision, or actually, not we, because council will relatively have to make that decision. Is one meeting, is that meeting number five enough? Do, or do we want one comment meeting and then really push for the written comments and then move the discussion of project into the public hearings? That's kind of the conceptual issue that we all have to struggle.
If we, via Sequoia, have to memorialize all comments, written and verbal, how are we going to handle the verbal part of it, John?
Normally, when we get to the point, let's say we, you know, the first direction is, well, we think we'll schedule two meetings to accept testimony at the end. Maybe, you know, we think one, I think, as the commission's pointed out, one is probably not very realistic, even on a, unless you're going to be very, very aggressive on timekeeping, and that doesn't always work very well here. Let's say we have two meetings. We would typically have a court reporter, so we'll have, you know, this will be filmed, but we'll often have a court reporter who'll actually transcribe literally word for word, and that comes out in a transcript. You know, we review it, then that's what the EIR consultant gets in terms of the comments, so and so, you know, literally. And then you pull out what the Sequoia comments are out of that. We wouldn't provide that for the informational sessions, because again, that's not intended as an, you know, people can say what they want and, you know, they're going to do what they want, but they're not structured in a way where they're going to have that level of intent, or they're not intended to take public testimony at that. Again, it's informational session. Again, we'll have to capture those, and again, we have, all these will be filmed and taped, and we'll have a way of extracting them. But for those meetings that are really focused on accepting public comment, we'll have a court reporter.
I have a question. How will the other business of the planning commission be conducted within the scope of this EIR?
Probably gets back to what your schedule is. You know, if we do follow the original schedule, we have, say, four meetings in two weeks, that may or may not even fall within our regularly scheduled, and I normally have a meeting every two weeks, but sometimes when you get to a fifth, Thursday or whatever, there's sometimes three weeks in the cycle. So we'll have to see. We could certainly schedule a special meeting for our own business. We can call these, these are, the ironic thing is what you're having here with the Baylands, those aren't planning commission, they're not even, I wouldn't even hesitate to call it a planning commission meeting. It's really, you're, you're serving a host function that the councils ask you to serve. I mean, everyone matter, frankly, if we had an agenda, I mean, a quorum, because you're not taking action. You know, two of you showed up, we could still have these kind of sessions. So they're not the typical meeting that we're used to having here. And they're really a, a public forum, and you're just kind of serving as the host, representing the city, kind of as a courtesy more.
So what you're saying is that we would have meetings just primarily for the business, planning commission business?
Yes, we would not, we would not mix.
And these will be.
Separate, in their entirety.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, we never want to mix planning commission business with these, because it's very confusing to people to think, oh, you're going to do, you're wearing one hat here and another hat for the other part of the meeting. That's, we wouldn't want to send that message.
And we will make it very clear to the, to our fellow citizens that we are not in a position to respond to their comments. They can give all the input they want, but we are not charged with responding to their questions or their comments.
And we're not, we're not in a position to do that, even if we all wanted to. It's just, it's.
Not at this point.
Yeah, exactly.
Later on, we will.
I think we could also say that our personal responses, that whatever we as citizens feel, we're going to be putting them in privately or.
As individuals.
As individuals.
Yeah, I think part of what we will do is, again, to facilitate the meetings, is, you know, that's why we want to counsel well in advance of this, and make sure we're kind of getting this out. When we're closer to a schedule, you get into this kind of save the date sort of thing, and actually put information out that this is going to, what's going to happen, and these are the way the meetings are going to be run and scheduled, as much as we can get out front. So it's not a surprise. But I could see providing the chair with a certain script that, you know, is part of a welcome. It's not even like, you're not calling a meeting to order, you're welcoming the citizens to this and a little sort of caveat. It's a whole different thing than a planning commission meeting in its typical form. And, and again, to help maybe the repetition, when people hear it every night they're here, maybe it'll start to sink in what they're, what they're there for, and, you know, maybe we'll get a little more understanding of what the purpose is. Because it is very different, as you said, you know, it's, and it's unusual, it's absolutely unusual. You know, the whole thing is unusual relative to how you normally do business. So to the extent we play that up and make it very clear that this isn't part of your regular job, and you're not really serving as a commission, you're serving really as a, as a representative of the city.
I think we did slightly differently when we had the EIR for the quarry. That one was part of the planning commission business during the planning commission business meetings. But this one here, we can, we're proposing it to be separate altogether.
Absolutely. I wouldn't call this a, you know, we advertise it, we won't be advertising it as a, we'll be advertising it as the planning commission hosting a public work, public information session on the Brisbane Baylands EIR.
Yeah. One question I have is like regarding the, sorry, regarding the verb, the oral communications, whatever we're going to record it, you know, the verbal comments, is it possible to print that and make it available to the people so that they can see where exactly, if there is any discrepancy or they don't think that this is what they said, they will have the opportunity to correct it? Because I'm sure there will be some people that say, this is not what I said. So is it possible that we can, I mean, it will cost a little bit of, I mean, of course, cost involved, but at the same time, you can give them the opportunity to correct it and resubmit that, so that they can have a proper comment that whatever they wanted to say at that time. Has it been done before or?
And actually, no. And I was thinking about every time I've ever been an expert witness and been in a deposition, and then I look at the transcript that I have to sign, and boy, if I had a chance to say, no, I would have said that differently, I'd take that every time, because something you would write down and send in a letter will be far more coherent than you will ever manage an instrument. And when people will read the exact words that they said, and you can check it against the tape, they will swear they never said it, because the, people think, I said it much more clearly than that. And that will be a problem. I would, I would not recommend allowing people to modify their transcript, if you, my own political statement, if you, the congressmen get to do that on the record. So little of what's in the congressional record is actually a transcript of what was said, because they're all correcting it. I think we'd, we'd open up a can of worms that would just.
Yeah. I mean, I was just wondering, that, that will be a big issue in the minds of the citizens here.
It may be part of the dialogue about why you might encourage, and people are free to speak, but, you know, again, they're probably going to have a time limit, even in the most generous of circumstances. I can't imagine you're going to let people, you know, without any limited of time, on a letter, you can write as many comments as you want, and you can elaborate as, as much detail as you like. And I think that's part of the message why we encourage written comments, is because, again, you don't have those constraints of time or pressure or an audience, and you can really fully articulate that. So the idea of, if you start enabling, you know, the idea of that sort of reconstructed history, you're, you're not necessarily encouraging people to take it to that written step.
Correct. I mean, the whole idea was that, that way we will have the correct written format, form that they wanted to say, even though they said verbally. But if, I can understand the problems that.
If I could ask my question now, tentative dates for this, do we have any?
Is the EIR out already, or it's not, or what's the status?
I think we've been talking about, again, building in the, and again, we're not to the date of having publication tied down, so as long as you, you.
You've been waiting for a whole year now.
Is that all? I thought we were waiting five or six years at this point. Let's, just for discussion, say, maybe the late, for hearings, or for, I mean, for information sessions, maybe late February?
Yeah. We were looking late February, and part of that is also, how much time do we give people before the start of the public review period? Then how much time to, warning, here's when the document's coming out. So we would actually do a series of notices that would say, the draft EIR will be available for public review two weeks from now, three weeks from now, and get that notice out, excuse me. And here's the process. Then hold these informational meetings two to three weeks after the start of the review period, and then maybe pushing later. So we're projecting that, to do that, we'd be third, fourth week of February for the informational meetings, and then depending on how late we push those, the comment meeting or meetings, maybe two months after that.
Okay.
So, yeah, go ahead.
So let me understand this. So when the EIR comes out, the clock does not start ticking on the 120 days, because, or you start the ticking, it's the ticking of the clock a couple of weeks after that?
No, the date, the clock starts ticking, the date it's available.
The date it's available.
So, so the concept would be, the draft EIR gets to the state clearinghouse on, that's day one. So that's, that's when the public is, the document's available to the public. We now have, so we would project that the workshops or the informational meetings would start about day 15.
Okay.
So people have the document a couple of weeks, because it would be really hard to say, okay, here we are on day one, and now we're having informational meetings, and nobody's seen anything. So we'll give people a little bit of time. We'll also hear, you didn't give me enough time, but it's, it's a little bit difficult. So we would hold the workshops, say, day 15, 16, 22, 23, then come back, maybe day 60, 70, somewhere there in that 120-day review period, for the comment part of the review of this portion. We didn't want to have that meeting five, or meetings five and six at the very end, like day 110, 120. People will write, will have that meeting, gee, I need, you know, something just came to mind, now I want to write something. So we want to give them time after that meeting to hear what's said, hear the other comments, and then still they'd have a month, six weeks to write comments within that 120 days. So what I think we'll do, I guess maybe by Monday, is talk through and be able to say, this is what it would look like from day one through day 120, when these workshops would about fall, and answer some of those questions that you're raising now.
So what I hear you saying is that the draft EIR is going to come out about the first week of February at this point? The second week of February?
No, so January is.
Yeah, but then, but you're saying that the, these meetings are going to be towards the end of February?
Again, these are all for, we're not to the point of being plus minus three days or five days from a final publication date, but, I think we're, so right now, yeah, I mean, if you're looking at the schedule we're talking about, that, that would suggest we'll be ready by February 1st and ready to publish. And the EIR will be published on the 1st, but we're not saying that today, that yes, that's absolutely the case.
Okay.
So I think when you set up the schedule, you have to start with the first milestone, which is the release of the EIR. Then you're going to allow one week or two weeks for the people to review it, and then two weeks to finish this presentation, and two weeks to get the final comments.
Correct. Yeah, and we're also, we were also trying to anticipate advertising schedules, giving people warning that it's coming out, so, and think all that through. And when we first looked at third, fourth week of February, we hadn't really thought through the timing coming up in front of a review period of the.
I think, I think one thing that's throwing everybody off is the January for 120 days. January is not the set date yet.
No.
So I think in your, in your memorandum, it says January for 120, that the EIR will not be here until February. So that's what the.
Yeah, that could be, yeah, I think we originally said end of January, end of January.
It should be the beginning.
Schedules, and even the, the day 15, 16, I think, was my construct right now. So we'll need to think through that. Does it, how much time from the start of the public review period? So let's say the, the start of the public review period is January 31st, how much time do people really need before we have those first informational workshops? Is two weeks enough? Is a month too long? And that we'll need to think through also.
I think if you allow too, too much time in the upfront, then it will be, we want to keep more time in the, towards the end. So two weeks will be pretty good, actually.
It seems about right, but we might as, you know, and I've done this long enough to know, it will be, we will be criticized for doing it too early and too late, all at the same time.
Yeah, of course. I mean, there will be, either way you do, there will be some.
Well, I mean, you know, I get back to this education thing. Let people know what restrictions we are faced with, and that's not something we're imposing on the public. That's, these are, these are laws that we have to follow.
Right.
You know, we might want to do something different, but we can't. So it's all a matter of education and managing people's expectations from the get-go.
Yeah. And I think Lloyd, what I would suggest is that in your memo, you can remove the January four, and just say that after the 120 days from the day when, when the EIR is released, that will clarify a little bit better. And also, number five, you can maybe, maybe. And also number five, you can maybe, maybe put, allow at least five and six.
What I would suggest, these kind of changes will, will bring up verbally Monday night to the council, because they've received, as part of their packet, Lloyd's memo, for starters, and will, you know, correct as needed based on tonight's input, but those are all good, good observations.
Now, is 120 days is set in concrete, or it has to be, we have to live with that? Is it part of the CEQA requirement, or is it...
That's 30 days.
Yeah. CEQA actually requires a minimum 45 days.
Forty.
And pretty clear, 45 days, not going to be long enough, so the 120 days is coming from council right now.
I see, okay. But there is no chance in case if it does go more than 120 days, then...
The lead agency, the city council, can extend it or not extend it.
There is, there is a process to extend it, right?
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay, what else you can tell us?
Please.
I have a few, I have a few questions.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, the fifth meeting, or when we're receiving public comment, and that makes sense, you said, "Okay, we're going to have that, not at the end of the 120 days, but close to it, but so they have time to respond after that point." Do we need to have another formal public hearing, or how does...
You're having no public hearings on this ever, in the draft stage, there's no...
Oh, not in the draft stage?
No. Your hearings all kick in in the, again, you're basically serving as a host, we could easily set up a booth with a tape recorder, and everyone could make their written comments there. So again, it's more a matter of the, legally, there's no requirement that we have hearings on these sort of things, so, so no, you'll be, you'll be hosting another session where it's just, but the focus of that is for the public to provide their verbal comments on the, on the draft EIR, that will be formally into the record.
Okay, so, so we collect their comments on, so if they want to send more comments in, do we have to have another, host another meeting to collect the comments after?
They can send written comments the entire...
The entire time?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about the distinction between clarifying questions and actual comments, they're just sending all of that in, whether it's...
We would hope that, you know, through the process of the early sort of information on the document, and their opportunity to read it, that some of the more fundamental clarifying questions will have been resolved, so they're not spending a lot of time on where's, you know, the traffic study, those kind of, the comments are end up being substantive, but you know, people, whatever comments are written will be responded to, if it's, "I couldn't find it."
John, are these, these written comments, do we have to read them into the record definitely?
No, no.
That's right, okay.
They'll be part of the, and again, they'll be posted, as we did with the NOP comments, anything the city receives in writing, that'll all be posted. Once a meeting is held, where the minutes or the, the comments are transcribed, that'll be posted. So I guess to the chair's point about letting people, you know, review something, you know, they won't, but all this information is going to be part of the record and available for viewing, and so if I made a comment, and I look at it, and such and such, and I say, "Well, I didn't," you know, theoretically, someone could go look at the videotape, which will also be available, and if they want to point out that, yeah, this was a factual error, this is what I said, and, you know, that's obviously something...
But you know, you said that all the oral, you know, the verbal comments will also be published, right?
Transcribed.
Okay, now, once they see that, they will have a time to correct it and resubmit that, or it will be, the time is over?
So, well... And that may be one of the things we think about in the timing of that comment meeting, because typically, there's a period, it doesn't take that long now to, for court reporter to finalize the transcript, everything is so computerized. So maybe what we'd want to do is time not only the meeting, but also the availability of the transcript, so that was available maybe day 90, somewhere in there, so people would have that. Then instead of having us go back and correct the original record, they can then supplement and provide any written comments they would want on top of that.
Yeah, we can make that clear also, that you will have an opportunity to review your own verbal comments, transcript, and you can send the...
How do we do that? What's that process, that they can listen to the transcript?
It will be written, available at City Hall, I guess.
Yeah, there would be availability of the written transcript, yeah.
Oh, I was saying, you didn't say that, but they did.
And the DVD, you know, because these will be filmed like all others' meetings.
Yeah, so if you allow that, at the end of 90 days, they still have 30 days to correct their, in our written form, there will not be any more oral communication.
Correct. Other than the formal public hearings after the draft, after the final EIR, but, yeah, otherwise, we just get a...
Now I feel better, I think that, that will satisfy a lot of, a lot of citizens here.
Right. Will the presentations be available, you know, before, like, online? Will they be available before the actual meetings, informations, informationals?
I haven't talked to Lloyd, I don't know that the PowerPoint, normally, we would make everything available, you know, post-meeting, so if Lloyd presents on a Wednesday night, we'd try to upload it Thursday, if he has a PowerPoint.
Yeah, and that would make sense, is uploading it right away, immediately after the meeting, I'm not sure about loading it ahead of time, and all we really need is people walking in with kind of, submitting questions about a presentation yet to be given. That could create lots of confusion.
Right, no, I agree.
Okay, well, I mean, it, perspective, because, you know, about, I mean, we could, could we get copies of the presentation for us beforehand, or is that, is that possible? I'd like to review the material before.
I think, well, I mean, the material, you know, what, what we're trying to do, and I think, I know, and Lloyd didn't correct me, because I haven't seen, you know, I haven't seen work material, but it's, I think the PowerPoint, assuming there'll be a PowerPoint, will be more of a guide to maybe walk someone through, but I don't think you would use it in the sense that, "Okay, now I have this PowerPoint, I can..."
Review con.
It's not the Cliff Notes of the EIR, so I'd hate to kind of present it in such a way where you, you'd rely on that in advance, I don't, I don't think it'll provide that kind of utility.
That's fine, I just wanted to bring that up, because some people will be asking for that, so at least this will go to the council, so that issue will come up. I'm fine either way, I just wanted to ask. And then, what's the, and I know you, you started talking about it, how do we see us announcing this, or what's the campaign for, you know, I imagine the web, flyers, the banner out on the street, but what's, what's our kind of advertising plan for this? Do we have a idea yet?
Information from the library as well.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there'll be two, and this will be discussed a little more fully on Monday night with the council, but we have a list of, there, there are certain, there's the blog, there's an email blast list, there's the signboard, there are the typical posting, paper postings in town that are done. Depending on timing, we can look at the, some of the city-wide, you know, City News, or, you know, the Star publications that go out citywide, it's always a matter, those are a matter of timing, and we have to kind of coordinate whether the timing of that information, you know, is, is useful, so, you know, to the extent we can use those publications, and if the council wants us to do something above and beyond those means, you know, they'll direct this to accordingly. I don't know that, you know, has their own opinion about sort of extra paper, and whether people really read extra paper they get from the city, so I don't, you know, that's, it's going to be a value question for the council, if they, if they don't think our kind of normal means of, of distribution are going to be...
You can include a water bill, I guess, that might be...
Yeah, it's going to be a matter of those timing issues of things that are, you know...
Yeah, because you get that fee every month.
I don't...
Well, we could have, we could have, you know, notices that it's coming.
Well, that's sort of doing kind of a save the date.
Right, whether we know the dates or not, but...
Yeah, well, you know, we would do that when we have a sort of a round, you know, maybe not pinned down, but, you know, the week, or within the next X many weeks, this will be coming, and then you start laying out the idea of what the expectations are, and then we'd lay out the schedule, too, the, and these are going to be meetings, and this is how it's going to be presented, and, and you just kind of keep repeating that through, through the various, you know, we can use the cable channel, I haven't figured out how, but we could certainly do probably some sort of bag across the, across the...
Do we have any clue what our penetration is relative to the stuff we send out and responses? How good are we, I guess is the question?
Yeah, and I, we'll, also, we talked to our web...
There've been some surveys that were done on how many people respond to surveys.
I think...
They come before the council every, every year.
During the time when we were at war and the whole, remember, the whole difference, it was not form-based, but different areas we were talking about, at that time, we did do this survey, and sent it out to everyone, do you remember?
Yeah, well, that was asking for people's response, my, my question is more to...
Sort of penetration of...
How many people are we getting to with all this form of communication? Because from my perspective, that's the most important thing, is that we exhaust every avenue, right from the get-go, to, to get as much participation, so people don't say, "I didn't know, I didn't see that, I don't get this, I'm, I'm not on email, I'm not on Facebook, I'm not on Facebook, I don't read the city blog," whatever, but what is our penetration into our constituencies?
Yeah, certainly, the, the written materials are the most, in terms of the highest degree of exposure, so then it becomes a matter of timing, and if we talk about those kind of dates, it's quite likely we could send something out in a, it gets a little late, though, because if we're doing something that's available early February, and you send it out in a City News that hits somebody's mailbox February 2nd, you, you know, it may just be the timing of some of those kind of paper publications aren't really suitable for our, our schedule. Do we bend our schedule to meet that? I don't know, maybe we do, maybe we find that that's worthwhile, to push everything a certain amount of time, just so we can optimize our, our exposure. Those are the kind of details we can certainly talk about, but I think the message of front-loading this, getting it out there, maximizing the amount of sort of exposure, you know, that message has come through loud and clear, and we'll work with all the means we have to, to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, any other feedback you want from us, before you go to the hot seat?
Now, this is just on how we get to the document, I imagine, when we actually have that, it'll be even more fun.
The how we get to the document, and the communication with, you know, our fellow residents, is critical.
Yeah.
Absolutely critical.
And getting it right will make the rest of the process a whole lot easier.
Yes.
Or as easy as this one is ever.
Well, right. I don't think it's easy in this equation, but that's okay.
The first impression is the important one, so the presentation will be very critical.
Well, and making sure that it's, we've made the best effort we can.
That's right.
Great.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you.
I just want to put one more plug in, I put a plug in for three weeks, I don't think two weeks is enough time to go through the document. I think a compromise, instead of four weeks, I mean, given that we have 120 days, it's going to be probably near tax time, it's like people should have a little more time to read and be more prepared than to try to, you know, be directed through two weeks.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that timing and how that all works, but, yeah, the three weeks would, would make sense.
And also, the receive comments period will be more than one meeting.
Yeah.
It will, has to be two or three meetings.
We'll make sure council gets that.
Thank you for doing that.
Thanks.
Okay, the other?
Can we take a little break?
If you want to take a little break, sure.
Before we go to the next?
Yes. We'll take five minutes or 10 minutes break.
Okay.
Five minutes will do, or 10?
That'll be fine.
Okay, thank you. See you in a minute.
New rental residential projects, including condominium conversions, with six or more units offered -- with six or more units must be offered for rent at below-market rates per schedule included in the ordinance can no longer be enforced. Accepting rental secondary dwelling units at below-market rates as the inclusionary housing in single-family residential developments would also be a problem. The law, though, provides an exception to the rent control restriction where the owner has agreed by contract with a public entity to build affordable housing specified in the state density -- excuse me, to build affordable housing in consideration for a direct financial contribution or other any incentives specified in the state density bonus law, such as a reduction in site development standards like minimum setbacks or modification of zoning code requirements, including parking. Thus, if the city provides financial assistance or density bonus incentives for a rental project, it can apply its inclusionary requirements to that project. It's unlikely that the city will be able to contribute money to develop rental projects since redevelopment funds are no longer available and the city declined to accept fees in lieu of the provision of affordable units required as inclusionary housing. Some cities have conducted the necessary studies to justify adopting an affordable housing impact fee, which could be used to develop rental housing projects, but it's unlikely that the city would be able to prepare such a study on its own without coordinating with other jurisdictions in the county. An option staff suggests be studied further is revising the affordable housing ordinance to further interweave the inclusionary housing requirements with the density bonus provisions to grant incentives in exchange for guaranteeing the affordability of a portion of the units in rental developments consistent with the city's current inclusionary requirement. Housing Element Program HB 5A states that the density bonus provisions should be amended to take advantage of an exception provided in state law to permit the city to grant a proportionally lower density bonus and/or incentives for affordable housing projects that do not qualify under state law due to their small size or other limitations, as well as granted density bonus and/or other incentives greater than required for projects that meet or exceed the qualifications for a density bonus, such as those that include units for extremely low-income families. The state requirements, as reflected in the current municipal code, are very specific in terms of minimum percentages of various types of affordable or special needs units or childcare facilities proposed to be provided by developer, as well as the increased number of units permitted and the number of incentives to be provided. The smallest project that can qualify for a density bonus is five dwelling units and/or lots. The largest bonus allowed is a 35% increase in the number of units plus three incentives. This can generally be achieved by providing 11% of the units as affordable to very low-income households or 20% affordable to lower-income households or 40% affordable to moderate-income households. The city could consider granting an increased density bonus for projects that exceed these percentages, although a cap should then be considered, such as setting an absolute maximum number of units per square foot of land or limiting the unit density to no more than, for example, twice that permitted under the applicable zoning. The city should also consider granting density bonuses to projects that include affordable units but not enough to qualify under the state standards, including projects of less than five units. Since the exception in state law does not specifically address incentives, further study is needed to determine whether incentives could be granted above those provided in the state law for qualifying projects, whether such incentives could be provided in lieu of an increased density bonus, and whether proportionally lower incentives could be granted for affordable housing projects that do not meet the requirements of state law. Going back to the inclusionary housing requirement for rental projects, the city could consider reconfiguring the rental project portion of the inclusionary housing requirement chart as a new classification of projects qualifying for a density bonus. Generally speaking, the current inclusionary housing requirement for rental projects is 5% of the total units being affordable to very low-income households and 10% affordable to low-income households. Currently, under the state density bonus requirements, a project that provides either 5% of its total units affordable to very low-income households or 10% of the total units affordable to the lower-income households is entitled to a 20% density bonus and one incentive. But no additional density bonus or incentives are provided if a project provides units affordable to both very low and lower-income households. The ordinance could instead, for example, give a 25% density bonus and two incentives to such projects so as to encourage the provision of affordable rental housing. No action is being recommended at this time. Once a new city attorney is appointed, staff will be able to get legal advice regarding more detailed options for the commission to consider at another study session before adopting a resolution of intent to amend the zoning ordinance through formal public hearings. That concludes staff's presentation. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for this staff?
I have a question. So, does anybody know where redevelopment is? Is anything with redevelopment going to court? I mean, redevelopment has been disbanded, the redevelopment agencies. Does anyone know anything about any status, about where things stand?
Well, I mean, there's certainly legislative efforts in Sacramento. There are a number of bills that were vetoed by the governor last year related to redevelopment. His veto statement related to anything was premature until the election this year with the taxes. So, whether or not, since his proposition passed, whether he'll be more amenable to revisiting some of these issues in the upcoming legislative year. I think there's going to be a number of bills that are introduced that get into these issues of especially housing and how low-mot housing might be funded. But in terms of how that's going to pan out, I don't think anybody at this point really knows how that's going to shake out.
So, how do we proceed?
I was going to say...
I think there are a couple of things. One is, you know, again, the regulatory framework that Tim has pointed out today here is somewhat separate from the financial kind of end of it. So, I think, you know, we can certainly work on some of the regulatory requirements we have to make sure we're in compliance with state law. And then, however, housing funds, you know, whatever form they come back into the future. You know, there's a lot of -- the other sort of thing that there's a lot of push for is for that housing maybe groups are suggesting that the money, some of the money that local jurisdictions are recapturing from redevelopment, you know, because the city will recapture some of those dollars, right? They won't get the full amount, but they'll recapture some dollars that were siphoned off to the redevelopment agency. There are certain suggestions that cities should voluntarily agree to set aside those funds for housing purposes. So, again, that would be a policy decision for the council to make, whether they'd want to restrict any kind of funding stream. But that's certainly, you know, talking about options, that's a big option that's being looked at statewide and countywide in particular. There's been a lot of push to do that, to call bounce back.
Is there any idea of what portion is being tossed about?
Oh, I don't have a good idea of that.
Not at all. Like a 10 to 100 or?
No, it's more on the lower end because, again, it's sort of redevelopment getting 100% and a certain portion of that being set aside, you know, 25% set aside for housing. You know, that 100% is now distributed to where it's, you know, 20% to the county and 25% to the school district and et cetera, et cetera. And the city's getting a smaller total. Well, they're getting more than they did because it was being held by the redevelopment agency. So, the 25% that you were getting before from an RDA would be a smaller amount, you know, if the city, even if the city were to set aside some portion of, because it's a smaller pool, we're getting a smaller piece of the pie, I guess, is how you'd look at it. So, I don't think we've really looked at the -- if...
And I know that certain areas of the city of Brisbane belong to the redevelopment agency. Is that still the case?
Well, no, there are no more redevelopment areas.
I understand. Are we going to have to pay back the money that was given to us by the redevelopment agencies for? Was it a loan, the redevelopment agencies?
It's part of a -- there's a whole accounting exercise that's being done through the, called the successor agencies, where they have to look at the various debt obligations of a redevelopment agency, determine which they consider valid for purposes of, you know, repayment. And so, that's a whole separate exercise. It's a -- that's kind of independent. You know, primarily staff through the city manager's office and the city attorney primarily, and the finance director. So, I don't really have the details. But yes, that's certainly part of the exercise is everyone has to look at redevelopment monies and, you know, did redevelopment?
So, my question is, if money is given back to us, are we going to have to turn around and use that to repay the money that we don't know?
I don't believe we have any, what I would consider, any transfers that the state is rejecting. You know, there are certain agencies that, you know, in the demise of redevelopment, made some deals that have ultimately, the state has turned around and said those were not a valid exercise and required the monies to be repaid. I'm not aware that the city has any kind of conditions like that. So, we don't have that sort of outstanding debt.
Okay. So... All right. Where do we go from here?
Any other questions for?
Why do they make this language such a -- I mean, I give you the -- I commend you for going through this thing.
Glad you could read it. I'm glad you could read it.
I mean, why they have to make it such a legal language that people cannot understand? It should be a lot more simplified so that you can understand from A to B what's going on. With your whole presentation you had, you were going so fast. I don't know. It was very difficult for me to figure out what you were saying.
Oh, I see. Is it deliberately written to confuse us so we can make an intelligent comment?
I don't think it's intentional, but it does seem to be more complicated than it need to be. But there are two simple concepts. The inclusionary housing is the city's attempt to try to require affordable housing be included in larger residential projects. And the density bonus is the state's requirement that the city provide incentives for developers to include affordable housing in their projects. So, what we're trying to do is get those two concepts to work together if possible.
Is there any chance that this could be written in English and re-presented to us? I mean, really?
That's what I was going to suggest.
Did you all understand it or was it just me?
I mean, I...
I mean, seriously? When this comes back to us in a form that we can...
What you might want to take a look at is the tables that were included in the municipal code now. Sometimes the tables make it a little easier to see these different options lined up one another. And what I would do when I bring this back is I'd actually like to try to apply these to theoretical projects. So, you see how the numbers play out.
That would be great.
I like the table that you're speaking of tables down by the, what is it, page six or H16, where you're looking at the different density bonuses and the different scenarios. Like you had the habitat for humanity on San Bruno Avenue. I was curious, though. There is a good question here about, you know, if the ordinance is amended, then who has the authority? You know, is the council or the commission? I was wondering, what are other people doing or how is that playing out in other places?
You know, I haven't actually been able to find an example of another city that has quite taken advantage of what the state allows, at least within the county.
Okay. So, new ground. We'd be breaking new ground.
Right. We use that as a...
The planners have their own language, right? I mean, that's what it looks like. Anytime the planners write this kind of document, it's very difficult to figure it out. So, may I suggest that the next presentation, you make it a little bit easier for us to understand.
I just want you to come back, that's all.
No, I don't want to do it right now. I mean, I want to give our retired, what you call, special assistant.
Some more work?
Some more work and maybe a little bit more time to make it as simple as you can because that way we all can understand what's going on.
The intent tonight was really just to do a gloss over.
You did. You're glossed.
I'm very glossed.
And when we do come back, we'll do a real study session where we'll go through these point by point and give you the opportunity to ask questions.
Okay.
That will be appreciated. And I also like to know the special assistant title. What does that mean? It's a unique title. I haven't seen in any government agency before. That's why I'm curious to find out, I guess. Anyhow, you don't have to answer that to that question. And so, you'll be coming back to this. We don't have to take any action tonight on this, right? So, that's good. At least we will have time to get the simplified version and then we might be able to understand a little bit better. Frankly, if you ask us to vote on this tonight, I don't know what I would have done. One question I had was how it's going to impact the Charlie Enns project that was already approved, right?
That's correct. And it actually was part of a court settlement that essentially guaranteed that project's right to develop without being subject to any changes in city law.
This particular implementation project, the Charles Enns project on Bay Shore, that's already approved. It's not been built yet. So, I don't know whether it's going to be, it's going to affect that project or not. That was my question.
I had one quick question. Before I start diving into this more on my own, do you have any recommendations on any sources to look at the pros and cons of the, you know, the density bonuses and how that might play out? I know that, I mean, the tables kind of show, okay, one way, but how do I kind of compare and contrast if we did approve certain properties for density bonuses? Is there a good way to figure that out?
You know, I'll just have to come back with examples.
I mean, I'm just interested in that. I've been reading a little bit about it, but it gets dense.
It would be better if you can do the side-by-side comparison between what the state's saying and what we have.
Yeah, I'll look in the tables and the codes. Okay, thanks.
We want to keep you occupied, you know. Come back, I don't know when, but whenever you're ready. Okay, the next item is some committee updates. Some of you are on the subcommittees and would like to find out what's going on.
I have one update. I have an update. So, the update on the sustainability goals for the Baylands, right? So, the last meeting we had, we started looking as a committee at the comments from the different committees and commissions. And I wanted to, if you don't mind, just read what, you wanted to know what we, what our comments, our summary. So, I was just going to read for the record what was submitted by Stuart on behalf of us. The Planning Commission met on July 12 to review the sustainability goals for the Baylands draft. The commission expressed the consensus that the overall document was good and included many aspirational goals. The commission is looking forward to reviewing the document again after it includes both the measures, tools, and the action plan. They expressed a concern that a number of aspirational goals may not be measurable given the current methods we have obtaining information. The commission also expressed comments wondering how these goals will ultimately be implemented in the project, especially if there are multiple builders on the site. So, our next action is to develop these or turn aspirational goals into measurable tools and actions. So, that's the next step. And we have another meeting within the next two weeks. We're trying to schedule one.
Right on the Christmas Day, I hope.
Yeah, well, we're trying to get it in before Christmas. That was the idea. Yeah.
Anyone else has anything to contribute?
The last Green Building Ordinance Subcommittee meeting probably didn't go as well as it could have. Certain people on the Subcommittee would like to have the standards of Brisbane be a showcase for the entire region, which is above and beyond the rest of Samatow County. So, we're kind of at a bit of a stalemate on how further we should go with that at this point.
Interesting. So, what will be the next move? Are you going to vote on this or what?
Not right now.
Okay, so it's spending.
Yes.
Okay, those are the two Subcommittee presentations we have, right?
Well, I also wanted to say that I did go to a council meeting where they were looking at some of the ordinances that we had been working on.
How'd that go?
I don't know. I realized I hadn't brought my notes.
You did a terrible job or what?
Oh, I think they were looking at them and...
Both approved, all right.
That's a good sign.
There we are.
I'm trying to remember what they were.
You remember, John?
One was about the lot line adjustments and merger procedures.
I saw that on the...
And the other was the one related, it was kind of a cleanup, some of the lot line procedures, some issues about lot consolidations and making sure that our criteria were consistent with state law. And the only thing they really spent much time discussing was making attached dwelling groups, detached dwelling groups treated the same as attached duplexes procedurally, which would be by right and not by use permit. And they ultimately followed the commission's recommendation. They didn't really make any substantive changes to what the commission recommended on any of these items.
Yes, it was interesting that the mayor, Cliff, was asked to be excused. He was excused, right? I mean, he couldn't make any comments during that portion of it.
That's correct.
Is it because he was a planning commissioner at that time?
No, it was the own property that was somehow subject to these...
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it would be materially, he felt it would be materially affected, so he refused.
Okay. Anything else?
Thanks.
Okay. One thing I would like to bring to the attention of the commission here is there's a lot of effort going on at various universities, including the University of California-Davis. And last issue or issue before that in Sunset, there was a very interesting article about this whole dormitory that they're building, which will be 100% self-energy efficient. I don't know whether you got a chance to look at it or not. But it's a very, very interesting article. And if anybody wants to make a copy, I will be more than happy to make a copy and send it to you. That shows that if you try really hard, you can do it. Because in the past, every time when we talk about the inclusion of the solar energies or alternate energy firms, the developers always come up with the idea that it's not cost-effective, it's not going to work for us. That particular project shows that it is going to work for... It's a big project, it's not a small project. I think there were about, I don't remember, about 100, 200 units. That's quite a substantial project. So, I think we have to keep in mind that in the future, any of those projects come before us, make sure that we say we just don't buy the argument that economically not feasible.
Well, one of the topics that came up in the Green Building Ordinance Subcommittee meeting was right along those lines in as much as if you're starting a project from scratch, it's a lot easier to implement really great high standards. When you're talking about renovating an old building, it's a completely different animal. So, one of the questions we asked of staff is, and Lisa, are we asked, you know, can we get some numbers on these things? You know, what does it, what's the amortization over? You know, here's your investment upfront. Might be, you know, 10%, 20%. I don't know what the numbers are, more expensive. But what does that mean, you know, three or five years down the road relative to, you know, fuel costs, whatever? So, those things are in the works on our Subcommittee at least, asking those questions and trying to get some answers of... So, we've got education, we've got materials to give back to people saying, hey, if you spent 10% more upfront, you save 20% five years from now. So, whatever those numbers might be.
Yeah, another thing I want to bring to the commission's attention is there is, I think it's the Smithsonian Channel, they had those aerial photographs of various cities. And one of them was Portland. And they were talking about the Portland itself as this leader in terms of green roofs. In the downtown area, they have the, you know, buildings with, you know, gardens on top of the roof as well as, you know, the people are growing to produce. So, something like that we should also keep in mind, especially in the projects like in Marina. And also, there was a discussion about this parking lot that they built in Seattle, I think, which is supposed to be a mall. If people go there, I mean, what they did is that it doesn't even look like a parking lot. It's a multi-story, but they combined the parking lot along with some other boutique shops and all that. So, it's become like an attraction, a city attraction. And I forgot the, I think it was a 111 Lincoln address. And it's becoming like a tourist thing. So, it was in that particular segment of where I saw it.
On the Smithsonian?
Yeah. So, I think there are, these are the ideas that I think we should, if you are interested to pursue. And it looks like the people in this town are interested in this kind of, you know, the green building and all that. There are ways and other cities have done that. Right in downtown Portland, number of buildings that they showed from the photos, people have that. So, I don't know why here we don't. If we are interested, we should, you know, upcoming projects look into that. So, just for the information of the commission. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Ms. Nero, how about you? Okay, so the next item is cancellation of the regular meeting of December 27 and adjournment to the regular meeting of January 10, 2013. But before we adjourn again, I want to wish everyone happy holidays and hopefully the next year will be prosperous for all of us. People are really suffering the bad economy and all that. And I just hope that the Congress will pass that bill to so that we don't all have to worry about this financial cliff that's worrying about that. And also, there was, you know, the Armageddon. People were talking about that this is the end of the world, this may be our last month on this earth. And hopefully that didn't come true. So, we're all still alive. And I wish all of you the happy holidays and...
We dodged a bullet. There was a meteorite that came very close.
Right, very close, but we're still here. So, anyhow, who wants to make the motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the meeting of January...
10.
10, 2013, lucky 13. Let's make it a good one.
And cancellation of the regular meeting.
Cancellation of the regular meeting of December 27.
You second it, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much and see you next year.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.